Good evening, everyone. My name is David Fries. I'm the mayor of Tongonoxie. I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Tongonoxie City Council for January twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. Yes, I'm sorry, excuse me, I spaced out for a second. Mr. Porter, would you note that I'm present and call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Mr. Donnelly.
Here.
Mr. Dale.
Here.
Ms. Stevens and Ms. McCutcheon are absent for now.
Would you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is the approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Any questions or concerns about the minutes, or otherwise I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is this second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item two on the agenda, the consent agenda, in which we review the bill payments from the previous period. Any questions or concern or conversation about the finances? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Nothing under old business tonight. Mr. Porter, did anyone sign up to speak?
No signups, Mayor.
No signups, okay. Ms. McCutcheon is running late, we think, so we'll move on to item B.
Yep, thanks, Mayor. So, item B is presentation of city logo development project. I'll make a quick introduction here. Grace Haworth is here. She is a graphic artist that we contracted with, and I'll ask Grace to introduce herself and give you a little bit of her background. But this is something, a project that's been kind of floating around. I think it was going back to the mayor's first term. We sat down and we talked about a few things, and I do remember the mayor saying he felt like maybe it would be an oppor- if there was an opportunity, take a look at refreshing the city logo, that would be good. And while we both acknowledged having that conversation, it didn't really rear its head again until we were talking about painting the city logo on the new water tower, and we're like, hey, what did we ever do with that old city logo deal? And so, we, in about November, I believe, we reached out to contract with someone that we could- that was much more talented than anyone on staff, in terms of, you know, what are the parameters? What do we want to consider? And so, that's what we did with Grace. We gave her some input, and we were probably better at saying things that we didn't like than we were describing exactly what it was we were after. And so, what we asked her to do is, over the course of a few months, come up with some options. And what we're ready to do tonight is present what those options are, in terms of design, and get some feedback from the city council, and if we're ready to move forward, or we need a little more refinement. I know the mayor had mentioned he was hoping to have the full city council available for the review. And we didn't put the presentation in the packet because we wanted a little bit of a factor tonight for this to be the first time for you folks to see it. So, if we don't have a decision tonight, that's okay. We can do some additional refinement, or make sure that everyone's had a chance to look at it and have the opportunity for comment. So with that, let me, again, reintroduce Grace and give her that opportunity to tell her- tell you folks a little bit about herself and her background, and how she came to the options that are before you tonight. Grace?
Hi, everyone. So, yes, I'm Grace Hayworth. I'm a freelance graphic designer, and I'm also a graphic arts consultant at Hallmark. Graduated from Pitt State in December of two thousand and twenty-one.
Grace, sorry to interrupt you, but your mic's not on.
Do I need to push this button?
If we can fix it.
Test, test, test. Okay, better?
Yes.
All right. Do we need to repeat anything?
I got it so far.
Okay. So, I've been working with Mayor Fries, George, and Dan on, you know, coming up with some new ideas and new concepts for an updated logo. And if you want to advance to the next slide. So, a little bit of a preview of what I'm going to cover. There's three logo options, and they're kind of categorized, so three different categories. I'm going to walk you guys through my development process, give you some background on why I did certain things, why I didn't do certain things. And then we're going to view the staff talk picks for each of the three categories. And just a little bit of an overview of the objectives I was trying to accomplish. We want to move away from more of the agricultural imagery, modernize, and then capture a sense of community, which is a pretty broad idea, but I hope you kind of see what I've done when we move forward. And then, just a reference, you guys' current logo is here. So, we're going to start off with the Power T, which is our logo option number one. Focus for this one is, you know, we're pulling from imagery from the high school that's recognizable, that Power T. I'm also pulling from aspects of just the community element, as well as the actual, you know, the physical terrain of Tongonoxie. I wanted a kind of unique element, so I kind of wanted to incorporate your guys' rolling hills that I see when I'm like driving in. Preliminary sketches, you can kind of see up in the top right. I also have on there, it's the, I did some research into kind of like Native American symbolism to see if I could pull anything from there. The symbol you see on the screen is called the Hogan symbol. It identifies a permanent home is kind of what it symbolizes. So, I kind of was taking stuff with that circular shape and trying to incorporate that. And you can kind of see that again in those sketches. Then we kind of move away from that and kind of keep that circular shape, but also try to incorporate some kind of movement in the hills, in those gray designs, which are, you know, preliminary kind of sketches. And then if we advance forward to the next slide, so here's where I'm kind of building out some more, you know, fully done type logos. Pretty quickly, we figured out that we really liked this like sand serif, bold font and all caps, as like kind of the name tagline underneath of the symbol. So, incorporated in all of these, you see like the Power T, and I would say, starting from like the left is kind of like the most basic, and then we get a little more intricate as we go in. The middle row, you can kind of see more of an ode to like the high school Power T, but pulling in blue colors, staying away from red, identifying between, you know, like the school versus the city. And then, all the way on the left, we've got more of a gradation with the hills, and then the bottom, or sorry, on the right. And then, on the bottom right, I actually experimented a little bit with, instead of a circle shape, something with, you know, rounded at the top and flat at the bottom. And I believe it was Dan that mentioned, it almost is a similar symbolism to kind of like a silo look, without being openly, you know, very agricultural looking, but still like a reference back to historical things within Tongonoxie. And then if we go to the next slide, these were the staff top picks for this group. So, it was that more silo shaped with the rolling hills and that modern T that slanted. And then, the traditional Power T, more of that look, and more of an abstract hills, where it's almost like a stripe going through. If we want to move on, the next option is a line work seal. So, development for this, very similar to the Power T, but I wanted it to be more modern, line work based, still intricate. The logos I've got up on the right are kind of like some inspiration. Those are from another local Kansas City artist. It's just like a modern twist on more of that seal look, and then I've got the Kansas flag as like another reference for this set. So, moving on. So, these were the two that I came up with initially. We've got that Power T in the middle, and more of those like realistic looking hills. And then this one incorporates a tagline actually inside of the seal. And some feedback I got was, you know, it's a little bit too coin looking with the tick marks all the way around. So, if we move on to the staff pick, eliminated those, made it a little more simplified. And I want to mention, too, I've got the established date, so it's the eighteen sixty-six. And then my thought behind putting some stars around those is, when I was doing some historical research on Tongonoxie, you know, a reason for development was because there was no city between, or city or town between kind of like Kansas City and Topeka. So, those are almost like symbolizing, you know, the T between those two cities. So, basically, Power T, realistic hills, and modern for this one. And then lastly, this is my last logo option, and this is the barn quilt. So, this one has a lot more historical context when it comes to development. So, when I came, I came around and, you know, drove around and kind of visited Tongonoxie, and I went to the historical building and found this barn quilt up outside of one of the doors. And I thought it was really neat because it was like actually from here. And then at a closer look, it's four Ts in a circle. So, I'm seeing, you know, community aspect with these circular shapes, and then almost like a hidden T within this logo. And then I've got another, you know, just a reference of some other barn quilt type designs. And if we move forward, this is kind of what I developed from that. The ones on the left are, you know, pretty accurate to the actual design. The blue one is just kind of playing with color to get a different feel. You almost, the Ts, in my opinion, are almost more hidden in that one. But it's a cool aspect that makes you really look and kind of try to figure out what it is. And then I kind of pushed that idea even further and made my own barn quilt design. So, it's more of a, like a knot around the T. I've got, which I was trying to, you know, encompass that community aspect, keep with the blue theme. So, at the top was kind of like my first rendition, and then moving down, I took away kind of those leading lines, simplified it, and then turned it on its side to kind of see the effect that that would give. So, still like referencing historical kind of look, but still in a modern way, so. These were the two staff picks, so the traditional one, and then the more simplified version. And then, I'm going to have Dan go back and go through the staff picks of each again, so you guys can see them. So, that was the Power T. And then the line work seal. And lastly, the, lastly, the barn quilt. And then, just to kind of help, which just helps me, too, as an artist, to see kind of like a mockup of what this could look like on actual items that, you know, you would use for city purposes. So, I've got mockups of a few of the logos, kind of on signage, as well as business cards and T-shirts, just to give you kind of an idea of what it would be like.
So, after several months of working through this and getting a more refined product, we wanted to bring these options to you tonight. Again, going back to the current city logo, it predates administrative staff by, I, we're not really sure. We kind of date it by some of the older water tower structures that are in town that have some rendition of the current city logo. We think it's probably in the twenty, maybe twenty-five year range, age-wise, could be even longer than that. Really couldn't find any sort of history on that. You know, this is probably more of an effort to move towards something a little more modernized, something that's a little bit better adaptable to a variety of city issues. I really like how Grace mocked up, you know, what is it going to look like on a business card, on letterhead, on a T-shirt? And then, again, trying to define what Tongonoxie is, which we strongly feel that it's, you know, just outside of that Kansas City metropolitan area, and it has that unique, unique ability to have a sense of place before you, you're not just on the outskirts of Kansas City. I mean, Tongonoxie is its own community. Same thing if you're coming from the west, whether it's Topeka or Lawrence, you know, Tongonoxie is what it is. And it's something I enjoy seeing every day when I drive in as well, are the hills, so that kind of stuff really speaks to me. But I think from a staff and committee driving standpoint, and working with, directly with the graphic artist on it, it's just time to present it, get some feedback, love it, hate it, like this idea, more refinement, or I'll let someone else make the call on it. But I guess we're looking to get some feedback and input from anyone willing to give it at this point. Anyone have any thoughts?
Well, I'll go first. First of all, great job, Grace. I can't even imagine what it's like to have to make creative work all the time and then put it out for people to judge. That sounds like anguish, so it's not a career I would ever choose to follow. So, I admire that you, what you've done. I think all three are, accomplish what you talk about, George. They're definitely more modern, and I like all three. I think I, first of all, I don't know if we can even have a discussion on design without Ms. Stevens here, since I trust her taste in this matter so highly. But, so I like all three. I think all three are very strong, and I would be happy with any of those three. I do think they're all an improvement over the current logo.
Great, thank you.
I would echo the comments about the career choice. I also, I think they're, I like aspects of each. I like the quilt, the history with the quilt idea. And yet, I think the other two strike a little bit stronger chord with me. And I think generally, the first one is really sharp. I do like, though, I do like the idea of the rolling hills, more of that traditional hill shape of the second option, as opposed to the more wavy, the wave feature in the first one. I like that, those hills there. But I think, I think they're all excellent, excellent options, and job well done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I like the top middle. Yeah, those hills like that.
Yeah, I like the ones on the top right. That'll read really well on social media.
Yeah, I think so, too.
And... I'm sorry, that's the one I probably would prefer.
You know, it might be interesting to sort of take a look, not just with the Power T from the school district, but, you know, kind of the font and the logo of the library as well, because, I mean, we did that, how many years ago was that now?
Five.
Probably five, almost six years. And not that they all should be the same, but sometimes to consider how they shouldn't be the same, you know, especially with the font underneath.
This is a good one, letterhead and business cards. What's that?
Water towers.
Water towers.
Coasters, yeah. Koozies.
Too home, too home.
Whatever you give us the budget for, guys, we'll put the logo on it.
Well, Grace, we do want to have our other two members here to discuss it.
Absolutely.
A little bit more. And get their input, because when you're messing with the logo, you're messing with a big part of the identity of the town. And if you, and even though it's well established that Tongi city stuff is blue, this high school is red, you know, pretty, a big red. So, I think people will have comments about that, about why didn't you include red somehow?
Maybe a couple of quick things, as your discussion prompted me to think about a couple of things. So, certain departments, like the police department and the fire department, they have their own badging logos, and would probably likely not move towards this. They would maintain those images. Our public works fleet vehicles typically stick to just some standardized font, identifying the vehicle as a public works vehicle and a vehicle number. And so, we may not do this necessarily, but I could certainly, you know, predominantly, it would be any communications coming from city hall, like you mentioned, letterhead, business cards, you know, casual clothing for staff, whether it was embroidered or a T-shirt, something like that. And so, something that is a little more modernized, but it's easily adaptable to a variety of formats, whether it's on a piece of merchandise or sharing an electronic version of it. I think those are all things that are important for us to have. And eventually, when it comes time to repaint water towers, yes, what's it going to look like, you know, a hundred feet up in the air for everyone to see? But we also did look, as part of our initial look, we looked at school district, library, some other existing logos that were available, and either pulled for things we liked, or like Mr. Dale said, things we didn't like. And so, trying to come up with these options was sort of mixing what we felt was a good fit, and could maybe have some carryover strength from those other versions, but...
That's a good point. It's visitor facing. It's not necessarily, you know, resident facing.
Correct, yeah. And so, what we can certainly do is share this presentation now with Ms. Stevens and Ms. McCutcheon's. And I don't know if Mr. Donnelly's had a chance to comment, or if he has anything to share, that he wants to share tonight. And what we could do is maybe-
Numerous branding, rebranding, and relogoing corporate activities, and they're difficult and very nice job, by the way.
Thank you.
They're trying to, if you had a hundred people, you'd have a hundred different answers.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, no, I don't disagree with anything you just said. And it was, quite frankly, for just the three of us reviewing it, it was difficult to get down to three broad options to say, this is where we think we're going with it. But again, it's, if there's room for any more refinement, any additional comments, we'll certainly take that. But we'll share this presentation with the two council members that aren't here tonight. And if it's necessary, we can ask Grace to come back again. If it's not, and we're just giving feedback for a preferred choice, or maybe some minor edits or modifications, we can certainly share that with her. But, you know, I think it was our hope to, you know, get something, a choice identified, I'd say probably within the next thirty, thirty to forty-five days at the latest. Like I mentioned, we did kind of start this in November. But we certainly, even though that's a goal, if we need more time and we're not ready to make a decision, or we're not ready to move away from what we have, we can certainly do that as well.
Could you take that one with the gradiented green, and maybe use the colors of sunrise or sunset, or something like that?
Sure.
Because that's, that's a, I'm sorry, I just thought of this after three months. But that's a big feature of the town, I think, is the really beautiful sunsets. I don't know if that's something that appeals to you or not.
Yeah.
But that might be, if you had a chance to revise it based on what we talked about tonight, I'd like to see something like that, if you have time.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay, great.
Great.
Great work, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Grace.
Be free to go, by the way, if you don't.
Okay, moving on to item C. Resolution zero-one, twenty-four, zero-two, approval of school resource officer in interlocal agreement. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Pull up the agenda on the screen here, just a moment. So, this item may be familiar to some folks on the city council who've served several years now. Back in January of two thousand and twenty, the city council entertained and entered into an interlocal agreement with USD four-six-four for their financial contribution, and an agreement of a document that laid out roles and responsibilities for the school district and the city of Tongonoxie in reference to the SRO, or School Resource Officer, which is a city employee in the police department who's dedicated to the school for school support and functions in that SRO role when the school is in session. That agreement laid out, again, those guidelines. It laid out a fiscal contribution from the school district towards funding that position's cost, and that agreement did conclude with the current fiscal year, two thousand and twenty-four. So, we've received the last of the five years of scheduled payments, and with the expiration of that interlocal agreement, the police chief, Greg Lawson, the school superintendent, and the city attorney, Anna Kerselich, have worked together to craft this draft interlocal agreement that is included in the packet for your review. Some of the key points we want to illustrate and highlight are that it's another five-year term. We felt like that duration and schedule worked well for both parties, and there were no serious issues with that the last time around. Termination options do exist in the agreement, stipulations with ninety-day notice, and are achievable for either party, and that the city continues to budget and is responsible initially for all the costs associated with the SRO and their employment, outfitting, training, and other provisioning that's made for that position. The payment schedule you can see highlighted in the agenda statement outlines a cost starting next January for the next five years. That starts at sixty-five thousand dollars next year, with an increase of about two, of exactly two and a half percent each year. That isn't anticipated to cover the entirety of the cost increase, but as the design of this reimbursement is about two-thirds of the cost, it does keep up with some of those cost increases that we anticipate could happen forecasting that far in the future. This is a pretty significant step up in financial contribution since the last negotiation for this arrangement. In the past, our cost share, you could say, was probably closer to fifty or fifty-five percent of the cost of the position. But in discussions with the superintendent, the police chief has reached agreement that there needs to be a more substantial share, especially when you consider for about nine out of the twelve months of the year, the position is dedicated wholly to supporting the school and their functions. Staff are happy to take any questions you may have, but we are anticipating that in the next month, the school district would meet with their board and consider approval, or consider preferred edits if those are the decision of that board. But happy to take any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Porter?
I just, one thought that I believe, and we started this a long time ago, not just five years ago. I can't remember when it was, but I remember on the council. Is there any insurance issues? E and O, any of that type of stuff that we've addressed, or is our insurance coverage, our general blanket insurance cover? Because we talked about this about twenty thousand years ago, and I can't remember what it was. If our insurance covers, just in case something happens, and, does that make sense? Not health insurance, or, but...
Work comp or anything like that, but just general liability.
Are we covered to be on another municipal, and I can't remember, it's been so long, but I know it was discussed. I don't think there was anybody else here but me.
No.
On this group. So, that's just something to check. I, we need to do our thing and do it correctly, and, but it's just, it's something you probably ought to look at. I don't, something is sticking in the back of my head that says we had to adjust some, just for coverage. You know, standard insurance that we have for everybody.
Chief, you stood up. Did you have an answer for that?
I don't have anything, man. I just wanted to make sure I was available and off the gun here.
Go, go, all right.
I'm glad we can do the partnership, and it's been an important partnership, I think, in long term. And I'd leave that really the final, that up to the chief, if it is successful. I hope it is. But there are partners in town here, and a big part of our community.
Do you want, is this something you want to check into and give back?
No, I, no, I mean, as we've been operating, I just thought it's something to think about.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and verify that, Ms. Donnelly, but I think that one of the distinctions is that this is still our employee. It's just simply a funding agreement, and so, should be covered in the general course of how any one of our employees is covered while they're performing the job duties asked of them, so. But we'll make sure that we run that by our liability provider, just to make sure they're aware that they're working. just to make sure they're aware that they're working in a, for the school district for a set amount of time.
Yeah, we're messing with somebody else's stuff, so.
Mr. Bruckovich, could you let me know how that turns out too, please?
Yep, sure. We'll give an update back. Assuming we're covered, we'll just keep progressing forward then. Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
I guess I, just a general question. How, do you have like a rotation or does your SRO officer the same year round?
No, sir. Yeah, yes, Mr. Partridge, it's the same officer all year round. There, he, in this case, it's Officer Bradley Lee. He's assigned to the school permanently. And so he works the school hour schedule and reports there every day. Comes to the police station, gets his gear, goes to the school. And so with the relationships with the kids being so important, the students, we try to keep that to be the same officer. So that's kind of the method of operation right now.
And then do you like feedback with the principal or whatever about issues or whatever's going on there?
Yep. We have a really good relationship with four sixty-four. We partner on a lot of different things, like our lead read, we go to read with the kids. As put out, kind of like in the operations update a couple of weeks back that Mr. Brackovich put out, you know, we did the alert active shooter training in the school. The schoolers are absolutely wonderful partners. I mean, anything we need, they supply the logistics if applicable. You know, I usually meet with the superintendent and the principals, you know, on a monthly basis. And so, yeah, we have a pretty good method of communication to see how things are going. So it's a good partnership.
I was just curious. Thanks.
No, absolutely. It's a good question.
Any other questions? Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we approve resolution zero one two four zero two, approving the Tonganoxie USD four six four School Resource Officer Interlocal Cooperation Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. On item B, consider approval of purchase of police Tahoe vehicle outfitting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Porter.
So I'll give a quick introduction and quick financial overview on this item. And then Chief Lawson, of course, is here if you have any other questions about this. One of the biggest initiatives for the police department's 2024 adopted budget, especially in the general fund, was the purchase of two 2024 Chevy Tahoe vehicles to add to our existing fleet, which currently is comprised of nine vehicles, of which three are currently Chevy Tahos from an earlier purchase. So this is a part of a transition in a uniform manner to add to our replacement of aging vehicles in the fleet and replacing with like purchases to recent purchases. In terms of searching for vehicles, I want to give kudos to Chief Lawson for his dedication and searching for these. When you talk to other departments and other cities that look for fleet inventory, that market is getting harder and harder to procure. Even if you have government pricing, budget approval for the upcoming year, some of those things actually come back to hurt us because the inventories are so low and dealerships and manufacturers are not seeing fleet as the biggest opportunity sometimes to use their limited number of inventory. So he did a great job outreach and preparation and having this ready and these secured for your consideration tonight for the purchase approval. So the items we'll talk about tonight are the purchase approval, the outfitting, and then slight budget amendments to allow for the purchase to be completed. And finally, disposition of two existing fleet vehicles. So the two 2024 Chevy Tahos are each quoted and included a quote in the packet at fifty-three thousand, three fifty-two and eighty cents. So that amount, unit price times two, totals a hundred and six thousand, seven oh five and sixty cents. We also know need to update them when they come in that format. They still need lights installed, sirens, radios, badges and decals. And so the outfitting cost is a secondary component. The manufacturer and the dealership don't offer those services. So those services have been bid by TCS Upfitting, a Division of Traffic Control Services, Inc. at a cost not to exceed twenty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and four cents. That's for two vehicles with the full cost of installation of a prisoner cage in the rear seat of those vehicles. There is an opportunity that, there is a chance that as the department prepares for taking these on, that one vehicle may or may not have the prisoner cage installed. But we've adjusted this agenda statement to include references to two prisoner cages to give you the highest cost estimate possible that will be considered. Any questions about those two items initially? Okay.
The difference in the outfitting between, they're two different prices? That, just different trucks or?
The cage, Mr. Donnelly, the cage is the, I'm just gonna call it the cage. It's the prisoner transport section of the vehicle. One, one good way to save the money is if we make that a supervisor's vehicle, we don't include the prisoner transport, which saves, that's the reason for the difference.
A little more than two thousand dollars.
But we maybe do some shuffling around. We're preferring for the worst and hope for the best.
Yep. Okay, got you. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then in terms of the fleet and disposition, two vehicles of the existing fleet are proposed for disposition via Purple Wave, an online auction site that the city's used with good success in the past for disposition of equipment and vehicles. The two that we're highlighting and proposing for disposition authority, which would only occur after the new vehicles are received and installed and in service, are the 2017 Dodge Charger. We have two of those in our fleet. It would be one that we would anecdotally say we've had more issues with recently than the other and a 2014 Ford Explorer vehicle, which is the oldest vehicle in the police department's fleet as it currently is set up. Again, those would be proposed to be disposed of on Purple Wave. And odds are, it would be middle to the end of this year that that would actually take place. So switching gears to the financial situation, the city budgeted in the general fund in 2024 up to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in funding to fund the vehicle purchase, as much of the outfitting as possible within that margin. Our prices did go up a few thousand dollars each for the two vehicles from what we anticipated last summer. I don't think that's surprising necessarily, but it is unfortunate. But it is currently the cost of those contract government program vehicle purchases. So again, our total all-in cost between the outfitting and the vehicle purchase is a hundred and thirty-two thousand and fifty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. So the hundred and fifteen thousand in the general fund leaves just a little over seventeen thousand remaining to be funded by the Police Equipment Fund, which in this case is also going to be the recipient of the sales proceeds from the two fleet vehicles that we'll be selling. So in terms of fund balance impact to the Police Equipment Fund, we don't anticipate there to be a full seventeen thousand in decrease in funds. But it will be probably in the ballpark of seven to ten thousand dollars, depending on the purchase price that we get from Purple Wave with those dispositions. The fund is prepared, though, should we not get what we anticipate in value and wouldn't have a negative situation to be in should up to seventeen thousand dollars in costs be appraised to it. Any questions about that either? Okay. So in the agenda statement for this item, we do have four separate motions. I'll just walk you through them. And we do ask that you consider making either one combined motion or multiple combined motions in the interest of time, if you so choose. The first is to purchase from Robert Chevrolet for a total not to exceed. The second is authorizing outfitting via TCS Upfitting for a cost not to exceed. A third is to authorize disposition of city property, which is in accordance with our procurement policy requirements. And then the fourth is to add the expenditure budget authority to the Police Equipment Fund, which was left open-ended in the budget preparation because it could be so easily amended in the action like tonight to increase that by seventeen thousand and fifty-six dollars and sixty-four cents, which would allow for the remainder of the total cost not borne by the general fund to be covered. Happy to take any questions you may have, and I'm sure Chief would be as well if you have questions for him.
All right, council, do you have any questions?
Anna, are you good with all four of those in the same bucket?
Yes. Yep, they all pertain to the same thing and they're related enough, but I think that's fine.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Either-
You're the only one with the stuff, so you gotta do it.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the purchase of two 2024 Chevy Tahoe vehicles from Robert Chevrolet on motive in the amount not to exceed one hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and five dollars and sixty cents. Make, also with that motion, will be an additional motion to authorize staff to proceed to outfit two the 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe vehicles via TCS Upfitting, a Division of Traffic Control Services, not to exceed twenty-five thousand, three fifty-one point zero four, nice round numbers, from a combination of the general fund and Police Equipment Fund. And additional motion to authorize staff to sell two, or sell used police vehicle equipment and the 2017 Dodge Charger and 2014 Ford Explorer vehicles on Purple Wave upon activation of the new purchased vehicles. And finally, the motion to amend the Police Equipment Fund budget authority by an increase of seventeen thousand, fifty-six dollars, sixty-four cents as described in the agenda statement.
Well done. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I heard Jake first. Thanks, Mr. Dale. Thanks, Mr. Donnelly. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Nice work.
Good job, Chief. That's good stuff.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Okay, moving on to F, resolution of, resolution zero one twenty-four zero three, 2024 fiscal year gap waiver. Mr. Porter?
Mayor, if it's all right, we might go back to item E, if that's all right. That's the-
Oh, I am so sorry.
Radio purchase. That's okay.
Consider, item E, consider approval of Tonganoxie Police Department Budget Amendment and purchase approval for radio grant LSSI.
Thank you. I'll do a quick introduction again, and then also Chief Lawson's here. Just want to remind you all too, in December of 2023, we did approve the similar purchase of ten mobile radios under the governor's, 2023 Kansas Governor's Grant Program for local safety and security equipment, or LSSI. Both are public safety departments and their joint applications to that grant program were successful. And so across the city, we've been able to procure twenty mobile radio replacements at a cost of over seventy thousand dollars between the two departments. So that's a eighty percent cost share of seventy thousand dollars is something to really celebrate. And again, to commend the two departments for their work in putting these submittals forward, doing all the program requirements and having this ready to be brought for your consideration of approval. Our similar process to the last time in December for the police department radio grant, in this case, we waited until January, our current fiscal year, to allow the Police Equipment Fund to be in a better position to temporarily pay for all of this and then later be reimbursed within a month or so by the grant program. So the cost estimate for the portion of this total purchase funded by the grant is approximately twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and one dollars. And the, I'm sorry, that's the grant award. And then the city's share of that cost is an additional seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars or twenty percent of the total cost. We don't have this built into the 2024 adopted budget because this grant submittal and the award were both noted after September of last year. So we are asking as well in the motion, in the agenda statement, for an increase in the expenditure authority and revenue expectation for that Police Equipment Fund. So the fund you just amended for the last item, we're asking for an additional amendment tonight for this item as well. And again, the process will be that we'll complete the purchase, complete the mandatory grant reporting steps, and then receive our reimbursement, which we expect to have occurred in a prompt fashion. Happy to take any questions you have, but otherwise ask for your consideration of those two motions.
Any questions? If not, I'd be entertaining an international motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the attached quote from Motorola Solutions, Inc. for a cost not to exceed thirty-six thousand, one twenty-five seventy. Additional motion to approve revenue expenditure budget amending the Police Equipment Fund as described in the agenda statement.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we're ready for the gap waiver.
Thanks, you, Mayor. This item should look familiar to everyone on the city council. Mr. Partridge, I know, has a particular affinity for this topic. And we're presenting this early in the year, one, to make sure we don't forget to reconsider it before year-end, which is the requirement. Should the city wish to opt out of these requirements, it has to be completed before the end of the current fiscal year for this fiscal year. So again, the gap requirements are not relevant in this finding and this resolution to the requirements of cash basis and budget laws of the state of Kansas applicable to municipalities. One reason that we don't take the gap requirements and count in those practices every year is for cost avoidance in the audit process. There's no exact figure on what that requires, but it is a higher cost. One interesting note, too, is we did hear from other cities recently that were sort of polling informally amongst themselves who was and who wasn't opting out. And the city of Lansing previously did not opt out and three years ago chose to and did see some pretty significant savings in their audit preparation costs and have continued to stay in that practice in these three years since. So just interesting feedback to see from another local community, municipal government. Happy to take any questions you may have on this topic, though.
Any questions?
Yeah, well, certainly, I would guess in the short term, you would probably have to pay about double the fee if you went full accrual. I'll just say, I don't know if I'll ever understand the intricacies of not having a balance sheet, per se. I assume we're doing bank reconciliations. I assume we're keeping track of cash. I assume we keep track of receivables. And so in some regards, if you wanted to, you could create a balance sheet. Probably my only real concern is fixed assets on that regard, I think. But I'm not gonna stand in the way of making your lives more difficult. So if you want the waiver, I'm not gonna stand in the way. But they're generally accepted for a reason. And as an accountant, CPA, I feel like I would encourage you just thoughtfully consider before next year. I'll say this, the bigger the city gets, at some point, you really should consider it. Because at some point, the double the cost of the audit probably isn't worth the risk of material misstatement of assets. That's my biggest concern, of course, is assets and making sure that they're in existence. Probably the biggest concern. But other than that, anyway, I could talk forever about accounting. So I will make a motion to approve resolution oh one two four slash oh three, approving the 2024 fiscal year gap waiver.
Thank you, Mr. Partridge. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. Is there any other discussion?
Matt, I've argued it for a long time because I would rather have gap as a banker myself too, but it'd be really difficult. Because it's not just, not just preparing a balance sheet, but it's systems and internal process would have to be changed. And it would tickle me to death, but it would be expensive.
It's 2024, Chris. Soon enough, we'll have AI doing it all.
Yeah, that's right.
But I will, for this year.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. City manager agenda. Oh, wait, we need to go back to item A and swear in Councilmember-elect Jennifer McCutcheon.
Finally?
Those previous votes did not count. I want them strictly from the record.
At last. Mr. Porter?
Ms. McCutcheon, would you stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me? I do solemnly swear-
I do solemnly swear-
-that I will support the Constitution-
That I will support the Constitution-
-of the United States-
Of the United States-
-and the Constitution of the state of Kansas-
And the Constitution of the state of Kansas-
-and faithfully discharge-
And faithfully discharge-
-the duties of Tonganoxie City Councilmember-
The duties of- The duties of Tongonoxie City Councilmember.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Again?
Thank you for your service. Um, moving on to the city manager agenda, this December financials. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the December financial report is included in your, um, agenda packet for consideration, but I'll also pull up, uh, a copy of it on the screen here for reference as we talk through it. So a hundred percent of our fiscal year, let me see if I can zoom in a little bit for Well, I apologize for how large that is. That's hard to see. There we go. So totally through our, uh, 2023 fiscal year, we did collect, uh, ninety-nine percent of revenue estimates across all funds. That doesn't mean each revenue in each fund was ninety-nine percent accurate, but that means in total, that's how close we were across the board, summing them all up. So that actually is surprisingly, um, narrow in comparison to some other prior years where we haven't been quite that on point. We also spent a little less than eighty-nine percent of expenditure authority across all funds. Um, that margin from a hundred percent is expected because some projects, like, let's say, um, early parts of the costs for Fourth Street Bridge replacement, which is an ongoing project, did need to have sufficient budget authority for covering any costs that could be incurred last fiscal year. And so we tend to build in conservative expenditure authority when we can, because it is a violation of state budget law to exceed any one fund, uh, budgeted expenditure authority that's, uh, budgeted in the state of Kansas. Um, we completed all of our required and expected debt service payments last year, and we received throughout the year five reimbursements from our EDA grant for the water tower project, um, cost, um, reimbursement. We do anticipate there being one final EDA grant application, probably in the first quarter of 2024, and that hasn't yet been submitted, but we're feeling like we're within about thirty days of getting that all wrapped up and submitted to the EDA for their consideration and processing. In terms of ARPA funding, um, we currently maintain a little more than six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in funding after expending a little less than a hundred and nine thousand to date. Uh, we do have the responsibility to obligate or spend a hundred percent of that funding by the end of 2024. So staff are working with, um, our grant, our, our, um, excuse me, um, financial advisor to affirm that the approved contract with BG Consultants for design cost, which is what the ARPA funding, um, is being spent on as we speak and has been approved to be spent on, will meet that definition of obligation and release us from any timeline of spending every last, uh, dollar by the end of 2024, um, as required. We'll complete our next, um, annual, um, report this April as well for what we've spent to date and what it's been spent on with the required reporting process. You can see listed on the bottom of the executive summary, the dates and funds and amounts and details for our budget amendments mid-year in 2023. I would say that we had more than typical in 2023, some related to grants that we weren't sure we were going to be awarded or weren't aware of, and a few to help accelerate projects like our Fourth Street Bridge design project, and a few others that are aimed at letting us get further into, um, the, uh, total process in 2024, um, when we budgeted for the majority of the construction costs. I won't highlight any in particular, but, um, just will point out that, um, staff appreciate the council's consideration of those mid-year amendments. They're obviously, um, sometimes based on, uh, somewhat inaccurate estimates, but when those estimates are made, sometimes, uh, eighteen or nineteen months ahead of the fiscal year conclusion, it is important to have that flexibility and, and consider changes and plans when necessary. The next couple pages of the financial report highlight for major funds, both revenues and expenditures compared to the prior year and compared to, uh, the current year budget. Uh, you can see on the expenditures that, um, year-to-date expenditures fall below budget authority in all those funds, which again is very critical as we approach year end, we monitor that closely and ensure that we're not in danger of exceeding those limits that are set by, um, state budget, uh, law. The next two pages illustrate the same two, um, uh, visualizations for the utility and non-utility capital funds. You can see that the Capital Projects Fund had nearly a million dollars in revenue and, um, eight hundred thousand in expenses, and that was largely the result, again, of, uh, some preliminary cost of the Fourth Street Bridge project in conjunction with other planned, uh, large capital projects through the year. Sales tax returns, you can see highlighted, um, uh, were very positive in regards to the prior year as well as the current year budget. Some of that was based on conservative assumptions being used from 2022 when building the 2023 budget. Uh, we hope that in, um, this fiscal year, we'll have a little more, um, alignment between, um, revenues and, and projections. Um, we haven't yet received the first remittance for 2024 for January, but next week, we do anticipate receiving that and having that advice to start projecting ahead. Our share of the county sales tax, which you can see in this illustration, shows the same, um, trend, but it doesn't show quite as large of a jump, uh, relative to the prior year as the city's sales tax did. Our Business Park Water Tower Construction, uh, Project Contract Tracker is shown on the, uh, page being shown right now. As you can see, we're at eighty-nine percent of our contract paid after ninety-eight percent of the work is complete and billed. We anticipate that project closeout, again, occurring, uh, within, um, hopefully within a month to forty-five days. We have received thirteen pay apps and paid those to date. We hope that the fourteenth will be the, the final conclusion to that project. Just a reminder, too, that that, um, does include a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars of that nearly three-point-three-million-dollar project that was liquidated damages applied for the delay in substantial completion of the water tower. Um, they were essentially a hundred and thirty-six days late from the contract provisions, and that a thousand dollars a day liquidated damages was applied and not paid to the contract.
How was that accounted for?
It is essentially a reduction in the payment with an explanation of the liquidated damages being applied, so it's as if they've been paid for it, but they will never be paid for it.
So will the, the, the budget expense line item will be reduced or is reduced by that amount?
It is, and our EDA grant reimbursement, which is about forty-five percent, will also be reduced, 'cause we won't receive forty-five percent of that money we never spent. Um, the, the next page is a 2023 budget initiatives list. Um, we can highlight that we've checked off or made progress on nearly every item on that list, with the very rare exception of a few, um, minor items or items in the Stormwater Fund, which weren't, um, completed within the fiscal year. Um, I'd just like to highlight that this checklist that you see is almost double the length of the first year in which we, um, instituted a similar tracking system, so, um, wanna give, uh, credit to our departments for all their work in expanding the list of projects they're working on and tracking more and more initiatives, um, in a budget, um, initiative sense, uh, compared to even just a couple fiscal years ago. Our 2024 budget development timeline, the budget book has been posted online. Edits proposed by the city council last meeting were, um, added and, and, um, put on the website. We do hope to have the printed books for you by your next regular meeting, the first meeting in February. Uh, the last few pages of the fiscal report show, um, revenue budget summary by fund and by category of revenue, expenditure budget by category, uh, by fund and by category of expense, which you can see a lot of detail in those pages. Um, and then addition, in addition to that, a fund, um, fund balance summary report, all of the funds with positive fund balance, which is the number one rule when reviewing that report. And, uh, finally, the quarterly treasures report is at the end of the report, and it illustrates, um, fund balance levels for certain funds, as well as a listing of our outstanding geobond debt, temp note debt, and lease purchase or other, uh, debt obligations. Um, all in all, it was a really good, uh, end to the fiscal year, and we're in a very strong position. Um, I think if you all have feedback about future financial reports that you'd like to see changes or certain things you like more detail or less detail, I'm happy to take that feedback anytime, um, but that, uh, this format with the adjustments we've made recently seems to have been, uh, appreciated by you all, but we're, of course, happy to take any comments, um, as those needs change. Happy to take any questions, yeah.
Thanks for all the work, uh, Mr. Porter. Really appreciated. Uh, anyone have any questions, or?
General comment, Dan, that you might wanna consider, um, in, in your, um, executive summary, the second bullet point, we collected nine-and-a-half percent of the revenues. Makes sense, I understand, total revenues, but really, if you go down to the, and I'm, and I don't have this exact to the penny, but general fund exceeded in revenues, and our two utility funds were actually below.
Mm-hmm.
They really can't co-mingle, or generally, we don't co-mingle those.
Yeah.
So they almost, they almost need to be separate.
Categorized. That's a good point, yeah. That would be a good adjustment.
Because we did really, really well in, in, um, general fund, which we can blow in one way or another, and then in the utilities, we can blow it another way, or spend it. But we, and then coming to the utility, was there an issue with, 'cause we have a pretty good-sized miss there that offset in the total? I hope I'm making, I'm not trying to ramble. I, I think there's.
Yeah.
They're important enough to se- separate.
Certainly, yep. That makes sense. Similar to how we did with, uh, the graphs that illustrate it in groups of four or five funds, that might be an important way to show those totals by the similar groupings.
Yeah. So were those two, the water fund and the sewer fund, we, we just over-budgeted expected revenue, we didn't have a lot of water sales or something?
Yeah, and that, that.
Or was hills some of that?
That is a huge part of it, yes. In both those funds, um, we had to be prepared for a full year.
Right.
Of production, when, when production actually took place, starting in about July, so.
So if we booted hills out of that, we probably have been okay.
Yes, yeah. Much closer of a margin, definitely. And our expenses are also low, much lower than.
Yeah.
Fully anticipated, so those together make sense.
Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Mr. Porter.
Thank you.
Mr. Brackovich, did you have anything further?
No further items, Mayor.
Does the city attorney have anything for her agenda?
No items, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Protam agenda, Mayor, Mayor Protam is not here tonight. Uh, city council agenda, um, you guys have anything?
I have one quick thing. Last weekend, uh, Tongonoxie High School hosted the state debate championship for four through one A, and we had a team take second place. I believe it was, um, Ella Pruitt and Kayden Hunter of Tongonoxie High School came in second place, so congratulations to them, another strong year from the debate program. And, uh, the future looks bright. I think Mr. Harold, the, the teacher, has one more year after this. Hopefully he can get one more title on his way out the door. That's it.
Anyone else? Okay. Um, and that leaves my agenda. I, I need to, uh, appoint Shay Partridge to the, uh, library board to fill a, uh, upcoming, uh, absence, or not absence, but leave, someone's leaving, someone's leaving.
Vacancy.
Vacancy, thank you, sir. Um, the information is in the packet if you have any questions, but that's my appointment for the library board. If you'd wanna, if the, the city council would, um, like to pass a motion to back that up, I'd appreciate it.
I make a motion to accept your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. McCutcheon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Um, that's the end. What I had, Mr. Dale, did you have?
Mr. Mayor, uh, motion to adjourn.
Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Partridge, thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. See you in a couple weeks.